I'd like to call this meeting to the Dalton Select Board to order, please. All those who are able, please, to write for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Brittany, would you do the roll call, please?
We have Edward Coller.
Present.
We have Robert Bishop.
Present.
We have John Boyle.
Here.
And...
Mr. Strout and Mr. Bartels were excused.
Strout and Bartels were excused, yes.
Okay, take a motion to waive the minutes until next meeting, please, from the previous meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, follow us in favor.
Aye.
Public to address the board. This is the time when the public may address the board on any item listed in the meeting agenda or any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask you to do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address of the company/institution you represent. The public address to the board segment lasts no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. Questions on procedural matters may be answered by the chair or their designee. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when an agenda item is discussed by the board, please make that request at this time. This request may be granted by the board chair. Is there anyone who wants to speak to any of the agenda items?
My taxes, on there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, Tommy, yeah. Okay, anyone else? Okay, we're gonna open as a licensing board right now, and we are gonna have a hearing for Class II Automobile License Renewal for Tom Sales and Service. Okay. Okay, Mr. Beddett was sent a notice of the hearing on a 2018 Class II Automobile License Renewal, and it says, "Dear Mr. Beddett, pursuant to the provision of the Code of the Town of Dalton, Chapter 150 and 2, and Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40 and 57, you are hereby given notice of a hearing to be held at the Select Board Acting as the Licensing Board at its meeting on January 22, 2018. The meeting will be held in the Callahan Room of the Town Hall beginning at 7:00 P.M. The purpose of the hearing is to determine whether said board shall deny, revoke, or suspend renewal of a Class II automobile license due to non-payment of personal property and real estate taxes. Please be advised that upon suspension, reflocation, or denial, said license shall not be reissued or renewed until the Licensing Board receives a certificate issued by the tax collector that you are in good standing with respect to payment on any or old local taxes, fees, assessment, betterments, or other municipal charges. I am returning your renewal check of $100 and included a statement from the collector detailing the amounts you owed. Sincerely, Ken Wallum." Okay. Mr. Beddett, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, can I come up there so I can holler?
Yeah, absolutely. Please.
Okay, this is not a new matter. I'm trying to meet with Mr. Waldo. That's a notarized letter from Julie Wagner, since February 16, 2017. I can't use my property. Most of the time, we got the construction over there. They block off the road, it's a flood, parking lots, nothing but goop. It's flooded inside the building because they've plugged the drain that's here, there's like a curtain drain that comes around. The town, remember when it used to flood, John? The town put the pipe underneath my parking lot to take the water from the depot and bring it over there. During construction, they plugged it. Me, John, Roughly, and Mark Ringy, and Mike Collet have had several discussions over there. I've been without power for I don't know how many times. This one's actually mine. I think I left your copy over there. I barely have power. Those are, I think they've been there a dozen times in a year. It's very difficult, you get the shop, you go to do something, and there's no electricity. I've discussed these matters, or attempted to discuss these matters with Ken. I've discussed them at length with John Roughly. I still don't even have sewer over there, which we had before the construction. Everybody's been aware of these problems. But expect me to pay taxes on a piece of property I can't use. Kind of been attempting to rectify this with Ken for a year, almost, over a year, since September 16 to 2015.
Ken, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I asked John Roughly to be here tonight because he's well. That is true. I didn't meet with Tom on this, but John, that is why I'm here.
It's been a year, Ken.
And it wasn't really necessary. I didn't feel for me to meet with Mr. Chairman because Mr. Roughly was handling that with state officials. So, John, would you like to speak to what's going on?
Well, is there any particular incident or instance you want to discuss?
Comment.
As far as the construction, that's what it is. It's construction, and no other business, you know, has had any issues down there with...
LP's building didn't get flooded, John? Twice?
They're open, they're in business, and I believe they're...
Right, they don't need that someone to be in business.
As far as the sewer goes, Tom's on a, Tom's sewer line connects with the other property owner's sewer, the depot, the old depot. His sewer connects into there, and that person controls the sewer pump that's in there. It's a pump chamber, and he took Tom off, he took the pump out of the pit in his property. So that's not a...
Oh, you did it for him, didn't you?
Yeah, that's not a Tom matter, yeah. I did.
Okay.
So that's really not a, his sewer isn't a Tom issue. He doesn't have...
It works until...
He's not connected to Tom's sewer.
It's a pump system. You're not on a depot.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's a pump, John. He gets his water from my, from me. There's one water service, and then there's one service service. The sewer pipe is pumped across your main, goes from the, where the Coller thing, John, the big manhole, Robert, the thing that pumps in, chamber. And it goes through a two-inch pipe all the way down Who's a Town Street, goes over by Danny's old building, and there's a new manhole there. It's worked fine up until Dean Fraser dug it up along when he dug up LP Adams' drain, flooding their building. Me, John, and DOT Mike Collet aware of it when the John Osprey went through. They never fixed it. They dug it up, never fixed it. I mean, I had it before. I should have it after construction. I get it's private line, but it was working fine before Balthazar came through and dug it up.
In my eyes, I just, just to clarify, James Torrey owns the property of the depot. James Torrey had me take the pump out. It's out, it's a private line, so that has nothing to do with, it's not a Tom. Tom's sewer issue is not a Tom issue at this time. It's a private issue.
He took the pump off because it burned up. John put a new pump in, it burned that one up too, because there is no pipe.
I never put a pump in there.
Jimmy told me the other day that you put a pump in, you charged him like two grand for it or something.
There's no pump in there.
Okay. Is the, is the line open?
Which line? Your line?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay. It was open before the construction, is it open now? You were supposed to check it months ago, before they paved the road.
It's not, well, that line doesn't go under the road. That line goes in, your line goes into the pump chamber.
How's it get the other side of the road, John?
Your line goes into the pump chamber.
Right, where's the one from the pump chamber though?
That goes across the road.
Okay.
But you're not, you're no longer in that system.
Well, I have to be in the system. I've been in there since, what, 1985?
Well, it's a private issue.
Yeah.
That's a private issue.
Well, you just connected it, John. You work for the town. You made a town issue.
I have a question. The unpaid taxes, isn't it also other real estate that you have?
That's all taken care of.
We have the tax collector here, it's a...
No, on or about January 3, Mr. Beddett had come in to get some information from my office concerning his property that's gone into tax title. That would be, I'm assuming, his home on 92 Braebarn Road?
That should be taken care of with the...
That property is actually, went into tax title in September and has outstanding taxes for the current fiscal year that we're in.
How much?
Your mortgage company does escrow your real estate tax, but your fire district tax hasn't been paid.
Okay.
So it went into tax title for 2017 and the 2018.
Okay, what's the amount?
Well, changes every day.
Okay.
But...
Approximately?
Approximately for the $640.34, but that was back when you came in on January 3. So every day it does, and we would have to check with the treasurer's office for the exact amount on the property that went into tax title for '17.
But I think John will understand that having a cop parked at the end of the street, we had had a discussion, Chief Coe said he was gonna have different signs put up that said businesses remain open. We never got those. The Stady that was there didn't like getting out of his car, turned away customers left and right. It's, this stuff, it's been a year or two brewing, and no one's done anything about it. How am I supposed to make a living?
Since the completion of the road, are you still having some of these flooding issues and everything?
Yeah. Just go drive by there today. They didn't put nothing down far enough, they kept raising it or not.
Tom would now move the vehicles for...
I couldn't move the trailer. I don't have a fifth-wheel thing. They called, they called from the DOT like Friday at 4 o'clock, Memorial Day weekend, I think it was, to have it moved for Tuesday. Because it didn't get moved, it ended up getting damaged. Somehow, somehow, they knew that there was damage on it before they got there, so they took a picture of the damage before it's been... It's like I had to dig out the drain that John and Mark Ringy and Mike Collet said they were gonna jet out, because it flooded up on the other end of the depot. My whole parking lot was swamped.
There's still two vehicles in the way for construction to complete that project from the drainage. On each end of the parking lot, there's a vehicle in the way.
That, and the other thing is, is from the trucks coming in and out, they ground my parking lot to death. They were pulling in, steering the wheels loaded, tore my parking lot up. They left themselves a stripe across. They blacked out here, and they blacked out here, and they left like an eight-foot path with no blacktop, where my parking lot used to be, because Balthazar didn't, they were supposed to put in two separate water services. They never accomplished that. So if I shut my water off, Jimmy Torrey up on the hill loses water. Nothing was done properly. They dumped another drain, like 18-inch drain that's not in the plan, out on my property. In the meantime, while they were doing that, they broke open a fuel tank and dumped fuel all over the place. And on the other side, it's LP Adams.
How much fuel will that spill?
I don't know. It smelled, I was scurrying around my place looking for it, because I thought it was on my side.
What is the town extreme is still under construction until April? Just for the record, they're not, we're not signed up, they're not done, so we're under construction.
Are you gonna handle these issues with the construction company?
Yes.
It's 3/31.
It does what it has to do.
Right.
According to plans, yeah.
Well, the trailer's gone, nobody's asked me to move anything else. They told me to move the horse trailer. There's still, there's still 16 inches of water. Guess Ian didn't like to fish and bowl with the barbering.
Yeah.
Like I said, I've been trying to address this for a year. I think it's unfair, and that's what I said to, I'm sorry, new tax player, your name?
Melissa.
Melissa. I assume going in to see her cause it's holding.
Were you current with taxes before the construction started?
Yes, sir. I hadn't been able to work. I mean, it's, you can't get customers there, and then when you're trying to work there, you got no electricity, you got no water. You got no sewer now. And from my discussion with Jimmy Torrey, week, 10 days ago, John had come and put a new pump in, and it didn't work.
Who is Jimmy Torrey for?
He's the new owner of the depot.
Okay. John, do you...
Yeah, a couple of things. First, can we have a complete tax picture from the town collector? I think we just touched on the house and this delicacy's there.
Yep, that's correct. And there's also outstanding personal property tax and personal property fire tax, which is, you know, it's the taxes that go out to people that have businesses, and they have to pay taxes on their personal property. So that hasn't been paid on that 460 West Who's a Tonic Street since, well, 2016. So nothing was paid on the personal property or personal fire in 2017, nor in the current fiscal year that we're in, 2018. The 460 West Who's a Tonic Street, now that, that's gone into tax title for fiscal year 2017, and there also hasn't been any taxes paid on it for the current fiscal year 2018.
That's real estate taxes?
Correct, real estate and fire district tax.
For fiscal 18?
For fiscal 18, the one that...
Which started last July.
Started July 1, correct.
Until then, he was up to date, though?
No, he didn't pay in 2017 either. The properties that are in tax title are from taxes that were not paid for fiscal year 17, which started 7/1, 2016, and ended June 30, 2017.
Do you have a dollar amount for real estate?
I do have a dollar amount, but I need to make it very clear that this has changed since the 2nd of January. Every day more gets added to it. So as of the 2nd of January, the total for the Western Tonic Street for all the taxes as of the 2nd of January was $3,142.2. And then, again, I said for his personal property, it was $640.34.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bob, I'm thinking here. I think, I may not be sure about this, but there was, at one point in time, a bylaw passed at the town meeting that prohibited the board or any licenses authority from issuing a license, renewal license, to any businessman unless their taxes were certified, paid up in full, including real estate tax, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I think that's the only real issue behind, before this board. The issue of construction, hey, I can vouch for Tom, he's got a valid bitch there with that water accumulation in front of his place, but that's with the state of Massachusetts.
I've been trying to talk to Ken for all year.
Well, Ken's not, he's nothing to do with it. The state of Massachusetts is his construction job. John Roughly will tell you that. They made the decisions, they fund the repairs, they listen to the complaints. I've told everybody that for two years up there.
They don't listen to complaints.
Well, I know a lot of people that get a satisfaction, but that's not the point here. I think, but I don't have it in front of me, that we're prohibited by town bylaw from issuing this, what is it, Class III Automobile Sales License?
License 2.
License 2?
Yeah.
Unless the taxes are paid. I think it's a black and white. I don't know, Ken, if you can shed any light on that particular...
Well, that's, that's the chapter that's stated there, Chapter 457, but it's at the discretion of the Select Board to suspend, deny, or revoke.
Okay, is that our discretion?
Yeah, I'm hearing.
Tom, have you ever thought about a, if we agree, some sort of a payment plan?
Yeah, as soon as I get back on my feet, John. I've had some health issues, as you know. We talked the other day. CT scan, scan tomorrow. Hopefully, it comes out a little better and I can get back to work. Got some other legal matters going on, I think.
Is there anybody, in the next couple of days, you can make a goodwill?
No. You're gonna have to give me, like I said, a couple of months. I mean, this is the slowest time of the year for me.
Yeah, of course, obviously.
And with, with the way the construction was, I was closed pretty much for two years.
Now, it's interesting, you talking about that water accumulated in front of your place.
We had it taken care of.
That was one of the main things that Who's a Town Street Reuse and Correction Project was gonna alleviate.
I could imagine.
And evidently, it didn't. The water's still...
No, it's a pond.
Ponds out there. I'm a little disappointed in that, but I don't know all the ins and outs of what happened there. Yeah, I...
Now, I'm gonna need six months, John, probably, to get on Borough Street.
Hey, can I suggest to board that we delay any action on this until July 1? Just a suggestion, if anybody's got anything else.
Well, when you say delay the action, does he, is he able to do business now, then, if we delay, if we don't approve something?
Okay, extend the license until July 1. Yes, I know. Thank you.
We do that, John?
Yeah.
How much, how much further is that gonna be behind?
Well, it's gonna be behind all the interest. If it's $2,000 or $3,000 now, by then it'll be probably $3,500.
Well, and at the end of this fiscal year, which ends June 30, 2018?
Yeah.
If the taxes with the treasurer are not paid, and the current taxes are not paid, he's gonna go, that's gonna go into tax title too. So every time it goes into tax title, it's just gonna get bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger. So for him to wait till July to make any type of an effort is, it's not gonna help unless it's paid off, because all of this will just keep going to the treasurer and the tax title. Because it'll leave my office.
Okay, that would take place on or about July 1, the start of the new fiscal year.
The subsequent tax title typically will happen late May, early June. So subsequent tax title is when somebody's already in tax title for a previous fiscal year, and their current fiscal year is not caught up, they automatically go into tax title. So that would happen before July 1.
That would happen anyway on July 1.
Yeah, we're out in June, so that makes it easier for him.
I mean, I'm in favor, hey, whatever the board, I'm not trying to play with my will in front of the board's designers, but just trying to cut him a little bit of slack so he'd get back on his feet. We'll make it clear that July 1 rolls around, it's, we don't even have to do it, it'll be tax title time.
Yeah, it'll go subsequently.
Okay. I feel badly about the whole situation. I don't, I hope you can catch up, I think it's gonna be hard.
Yes, sir.
I think John has a question or comment.
John?
Ken, I would just ask the board that, if you agree to that, make a contingent on those vehicles being moved so they can finish construction, so there isn't a pond in his yard anymore. There's a pond in his yard because they can't get in there to work.
Give me a week's notice.
That's all I ask, it's all, you know, on behalf of the DOT in Balthazar.
John, and on or about what date do you expect Balthazar to be back?
Soon as the weather breaks.
So, into March.
I think the board should also be aware that there still won't be a functioning sewer there, because the sewer, the sewer goes from Tom's property to the depot property out to the street, and it has to be an arrangement between the two property owners.
I've got a driveway use that's been there since, I think I bought the place in 85. Nothing's changed.
Well, it sounds like a private legal matter between you and the other guy.
It's a civil matter, right?
Right. Jimmy has no problem with it, like I said, a week, 10 days ago.
James Torrey's lawyer called me yesterday and said that his line will not be connected, so...
I don't know. What is that, I got a driveway use, I mean, if somebody's using their driveway for, what's that, 30 years, John?
I'm telling you...
Like I said, it's not a flying cord.
Yeah. It'd definitely be a civil matter. John, can I ask you one question? When that sewer comes out of the depot, it then goes over in a eastward direction towards Tom's. It basically connects to the sewer on Depot Street?
Just before Depot, yeah.
So does it run down the south side of the street of Who's a Town Street or the north side?
The north side. It cuts, it runs down the south and cuts across to the north side, closer to LP Adams. It goes over to the old Windland, the old Windland property. There's a manhole there.
And that's where it cuts across?
Mm-hmm.
Digging swell, everybody saw the pipe when they were digging that out of the ground.
That pipe very well could be, just, you know, they did hit it...
Dean Fraser was the one running the excavator. He didn't repair nothing.
They did it, they made repairs, and at this time, because there's no, nothing being pumped through it, nobody knows if it's...
Well, you should be able to push water through from the other end.
DOT plans on making, you know, fixing it if there's an issue. That, that's within the scope of the project.
Yeah.
The project is not done.
Months, six, seven months ago, we talked about it. John was supposed to take the jet truck, bring it over Windlands, and put the jetter in there, and pump back to the manhole, just to make sure the pipe was good. At $2,000 apiece, how many pumps would we wanna put in to find out there is no pipe? Something that would've taken 15, 20 minutes, I can't imagine it wasn't done.
But yet, all those issues, not our issues here tonight, they're the state of Massachusetts issues. There's the contract letter on that job, and there's the supervisor, I believe, Mr. Collet. That's where your redress is, Tom.
We're working on it.
Not, it's not just board, right?
We're working on it, John.
Yep, okay.
There's a lot of things that we talked about.
I don't know, we're just talking, we're discussing options. Hey, I'm not, if you want me to, let me remind you to do, I'll do it.
Make a motion, anyone motion? Need some for a motion?
Oh, you want a motion to, the license hasn't been issued, right?
No, it's not.
You want me to make a motion to issue the license until July 1?
We can do that, I think. Ken, do you have anything to add to this?
No, I think that's within your authority to do so if you wish, and just, we gave Tom back his checks, so he would have to...
Yeah, I'll give him some feedback.
Have to feed, partially.
Well, I'm gonna get cleaned up, John.
Does he, Tom, this is the way we have to do things. We just can't, you know, like you and I, we just can't dam things to death. Anyway, to July 1.
Thank you.
And then, it's gonna expire.
Yes.
And we'll be right back here with the tax period again. Now, I'm gonna make this motion, it's also a contingent on your full cooperation with the DOT and the town road boss about removing those vehicles...
All I'm asking for is a week, 10 days notice. I mean, I can't.
You can't just move a couple of vehicles out the way?
Couple of them don't run, John. Why am I supposed to fit them up?
You got trucks over here, tow them out the way.
Yeah.
Have cars here, so I'll take them away.
Yeah, well, we're heading towards that.
But we gotta, John asked for this, we gotta have your word, you have your full cooperation.
Yeah, like I said, they can't call me Friday at 4 o'clock and expect them to move.
I think we have to have a deadline on the cars, or the...
Yeah, like I said, give me a few days notice.
This is your 10-day notice, let's move them, 10 days.
Can you get one in 10 days?
I can move one of them pretty easy in 10 days. The other one's buried in snow, because they really didn't leave me no place to push snow. That was one of the complaints we were trying to address.
Hey, you gotta have them out of the area of construction in 10 days' time. You can do it.
John, you gonna swing by with a backup? Just pull the right one out?
I don't own a backup, I can't help that.
Okay. We'll figure something out. Do our best to get them out.
To John's satisfaction.
Just the right one and the right one.
Hey, whatever he wants done from here on out, I'm just construction guy, he's the man.
Which ones need to be moved, Ken?
The ones on each end of the parking lot.
Just the one starts a row? One end from the row?
One end and one on the other.
Okay.
Can you get that done in 10 days?
10 days, we should be able to.
Okay.
Because I don't see them coming back till March, but it's...
Okay, 10 days, your license, your car license will be ready, 10 days.
All right.
What are those are moved?
Whatever I just said, I put that into a motion, subject to amendment.
Whatever he said, I'm gonna second.
I move that we issue a 2018 plans to automobile sales license to Tom's truck and repair shop.
Sales and service.
For six months.
Well, I think we need to give the dates, actually.
Okay.
It's not going to be quite six months, I think.
Till July 1st.
Till July 1st.
And it should be prorated.
And it will be prorated.
But you're saying it's not going to start for 10 days?
So it'll be February, so it'll be five, uh...
Whatever.
Five twelfths.
Appreciate the...
Yeah. And also, issue this license's contingent on, in 10 days, the necessary vehicles needed to go for construction purposes.
Yeah, move the two cars closest to the town.
Whatever John says.
Right. That's what he said, the two at each end.
Ken, is this a second to that motion?
I second it.
Okay.
Thanks for helping us.
The only thing I want to add, Tom, is we hate to see business people fall in hard times, and we're going to give you the benefit of the doubt here.
You see that.
And like, we want, please cooperate with the road boss, he's got a hard job.
Had the drive-in.
And this is not easy, it's not easy for anybody, a lot of these problems aren't his, it's the state's. And it's not Mr. Waldo's problem, it's the state's, okay?
Yeah, like I said, I pay my taxes to you folks, I assume that you help me, you know, resolve these issues with the state.
Well, if there's something, he can't. It's a civil matter at this point.
So, a point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, is the license to issue upon the movement of the cars is a contingent on those cars being moved in 10 days.
Yes.
Okay, so if the cars aren't moving in 10 days, we won't release the license.
We don't get the license.
That's in the motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
The motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion?
I just like to, you read the board on this, one little thing about this sewer business. It's not this board, it's not the road boss, but if you don't have this sewer thing resolved, you're going to have the board of health breathing down your neck.
How many times has the sewer been blown up over there?
No.
It was working fine.
Then you're talking serious business time, it's out of our head, we're just mentioning that, or that suggesting anything you do. But by your own admission, you currently aren't connected to any sewer.
Connected to sewer, there's just no pipe coming out the manhole.
I'm going to guess that you're going to insist that you rectify that.
Yeah, like I said, I always had sewer, I had it.
But you don't have it now, though.
That's, like I said, when it was the depot, John, should I pay the same amount for sewer as a barroom does? Probably not, right? You think that's reasonable? Now, if Jimmy's just going to have, well, the depot had a, how many people you think were using the bathroom over there on a weekend?
Because you weren't connected to their sewer, did you pay a sewer fee?
No, me and Al, we've never had a problem with it.
So you don't even pay a sewer fee?
Oh, I paid the town sewer fee. But, like I said, they're flushing the toilet 300 times a night, what do I flush, once a day maybe?
At all?
That's if I'm even there, you know what I mean?
I've got the board of health.
Yeah, that's board of health issue.
But it could be a real issue.
Oh, yeah, it's not a real issue when...
If you have a business just like that, you don't rectify that problem.
They never said much to come here and whatever about it, I complained to John repeatedly about her running into this one.
Let's move the motion. Okay, motion's been made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much, sir.
Good luck.
Yes.
Okay, next on the licensing board agenda, approval of new officer director of the American Legion. May I have a motion to approve the new...
So moved.
Officer, which I believe Gerald Roberts, right?
What are we doing, Ben?
Approving the new officer director for the American Legion. Should be right here.
So I'm guessing he's going to be the manager now?
Correct.
So I move that we are having Gerald Roberts...
Correct.
As the manager for the license?
For the American Legion.
For the American Legions.
Oh, but it doesn't say that up there, change the manager.
Ken, do you know if there's a beneficial interest?
What's that mean, Ken?
Who has an interest in the business? But it's really, it's a nonprofit, so it's like a change of the directors.
Yeah, just a change of the board of directors.
Okay, so he's being added to the board of directors?
Correct.
I think we're all set on that.
Yeah, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Closing as a licensing board and opening back up to the regular select board meeting for appointments for the police department, for a position of temporary full-time officer.
And I make a motion that we approve the Lucas Perry to be appointed as a reserve officer on a full-time temporary, a full-time temporary officer, effective February 5th, while Officer Joseph Kennedy completes his 26 weeks of training at the Massachusetts Police Academy.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Lucas, congratulations, good to see you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you for keeping us safe.
February appointment?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Yeah, just for 26 weeks.
Okay, thank you, Chief Cope.
Thank you.
Next, we have Emergency Management Advisory Council.
I recommend the ratification of the appointment of the building commissioner, Brian DeBau as the, to the Emergency Management Advisory Council.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
You just want to know that this was voluntary.
I saw that, I couldn't believe that, yeah. That's fantastic. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Brian, appreciate it.
All right, I would like to make a recommendation of the ratification of Michael McKay Clay as the animal control officer.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, budget reviews and budget update.
We'll start with the, there's a little memorandum in here from the MMA, showing that the budget writers had agreed that state tax growth would be 3.5% this year, and I haven't updated this over the weekend. Of course, at the MMA annual meeting, the governor came and said he would indeed increase local aid by that amount, that's what he's pledged to do in the past several years. The spreadsheet here doesn't reflect that, but I think that's good, that's good news for the cities and towns. Of course, you know, the legislature has to approve, but typically, they don't approve less than what the governor recommends unless they see some headwinds, which would cause them to want to cut back that estimate from the governor's budget.
Ken, what's that translated into dollars?
No, I haven't seen it yet, John.
Thirty, forty thousand?
And I can tell you that in the budget plan, it was $35,000 at 2.3%. So you got another percent there, something over 40.
That's good.
So we have, and you'll see, secondarily, I'll go over the budget worksheet a little bit more after we look at these individual budgets, but you can see that with the budget schedule, next week, we'll get into it, and this week, I just wanted to bring you a few easy budgets to put our feet and get going. So, we have several budgets to look at tonight that come under the treasurer's jurisdiction, that's retirement, judgments and claims, and commissioners of trust funds. So the first budget worksheet that you have is 9/11, it's Bertrand County Retirement, and they typically issue their assessment in December. It's just after I brought you the budget, the original budget worksheet, overall worksheet. So, this budget is up 3.68% this fiscal year, and that's an assessment that we have to pay, and part of it goes towards, of course, funding the unfunded liability and then paying the regular retirement amounts that are coming due. It's also a little less than I had projected, I had projected a 5.44% increase based on long past history, so that's really good news for us, it's only a 3.7.
Any questions on this budget?
And just to remind you, all these budgets are tentatively approved at this stage.
TA?
TA.
Okay. Ken?
The next budget is judgments and claims, and these are for small claims that might not be covered by our insurance policy, or the deductible is higher than the amount of the claim to be paid, that's typically what happens here, and the treasurer's recommending a level funding of $3,000. And you can see, if you look at the history schedule, in the past couple of years, we haven't paid anything.
That's good.
It is good.
Okay, TA?
TA.
Last is commissioners of trust funds, and we always, we give a little money in that budget, treasurer's again recommending level funding of $200. The only thing I can ever remember expending out of this budget is for a town council opinion on a trust, there was a question about a trust, and that's all I ever remember being expended from them.
TA?
TA.
Okay, so if you go back to the budget worksheet, again, the overall worksheet, those budgets that we consider tonight are in bold, they don't materially affect the bottom line, as we looked at it a month ago, except in a positive direction, again, because the assessment for retirement is a little less. So right now, steady as she goes, and until we get into the big budgets, we won't see many changes here. But if there are any questions about the worksheet, I'd be happy to try to answer.
When do you think you'll see the new money from the state, the percentage from the state?
It should be out there now. They'll, typically what's done is, when the governor releases his recommendations for the budget, then DOR gets out a calculation of what the unrestricted aid is for each city and town. So it might be up there now.
We'll just reflect on our sheet next week, or?
Yeah, I'll put it into the sheet.
Okay, any questions for Ken?
Ken, am I looking at the right figure here, over or under levy limit on last page? Are we under, would your projections in budgeting, we're under levy limit by $516,743?
At this moment, we are.
Wow.
Yeah, that's comparable to last year. We ended up last fiscal year, just about a half a million dollars under the levy limit, and the projection so far is that we'll end up the same way.
Good work.
Good. Okay, that leads us into, you all set with that, Ken?
I am.
Okay, now, you're still on for the town miniature updates?
Yeah, there's only one project I want to update you on because it's been occupying lots of my time, is the Green Communities grant, are trying to expend all of it by the end of this month so that we can be eligible, and there's a lot of little pieces going on here. The basic plan we had was to insulate the cemetery office and garage, that's being done, that stop started today and should be done this week, but we ran into a complication, we had to move some of the wiring, because you can't bury wiring junction boxes under insulation, so we had to get that done prior to doing this. Our consultant, Tanco Lighting, are there right now in the middle of designing the street lighting project for LED lights, so we'll be getting some information on that. They may not have it fully completed by the time we get July 31st, I mean, January 31st, but it'll be substantially expended. And the other piece of this is that we asked Hill Engineering for engineering assistance to get the boat, not the street lighting project, because they're doing it, but the cemetery office building done. So, they are working with us on that, and as part of this, part of the plan for reducing the energy consumption in the cemetery offices was to change the furnace in the cemetery garage, and right now, they're doing that, they're looking at the calculations, and we'll get that done. They'll be doing some inspection of the construction work over there as well.
Do you think it'll be done by the 31st, or?
Yeah, I think we will.
That'd be huge.
I think we will, so that we can move on. If there are any questions about any other projects, we have to answer.
Will you clear up the excess balance? They will be eligible for another round, another round of funding?
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
In the next round of funding, could we this time consider converting the boiler in the town hall from oil to gas, which is one of the projects we were looking at a long time ago?
We can't, we'll have to come up, we can't ask for any more than a quarter million dollars of funding. Right now, there were three primary projects on deck. One is to continue on, we'll get the most savings out of changing our streetlights to LEDs, if we can do that, save quite a bit of money, so that's obviously important. The second one was to, remember, we got the technical assistance grant for doing the architectural engineering to put the insulation here in the town hall. So, that could be part of it, those two projects alone could take a quarter million dollars. The other thing that Hill is doing for us as part of the energy conservation work in the cemetery garage is respecifying the boiler. That's not going to be a really expensive project, I, it'll be less than $10,000, I think, but there'll be some ventilation going along with the new boiler. So then we can look at switching out the boilers here in the building, if there's room.
I don't think it's going to be a quarter million dollars.
To do what?
Oh, switch out the boiler in the town hall.
Oh, no, 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 that was, I think that was about, I'm just talking off the top of my head, we had estimates when we did the energy audits, and I think that was a $60,000.
Yeah, it was 30 when we proposed it years ago, but it got defeated along with, they were all grouped together and they all got defeated.
Right.
The elevator, boiler, and central Bertrand Regional School wishlist.
When we did the energy audits, which we needed to do before Green Communities will fund energy conservation projects, they reestimated the cost of the boilers, we're going to have to go with that number as well. The real big project is the LED streetlights. Now, you'll remember, Richard Hall was here, and he proposed a letter to be sent to Eversource, which did get sent to Eversource, so there's going to be some negotiation going on. Remember, Eversource wants $180,000 for those streetlights, and we think it's $25,000, so we're going to, you know, somewhere there in the middle, but it probably would be unwise for us to underestimate the cost, we probably are better off going with Eversource's number.
I don't know, we've had some bad experience lately with Eversource.
Yeah, I know, I'd hate to say 25,000, and then we couldn't do it.
Right, no, I know.
A hundred thousand.
Things tend not to work out so well.
I know, I know, so we don't know. And we don't know, what Eversource has done, though, is they sent the letter, we sent them to their asset management folks to look at what we've asked for, and they'll respond to us as soon as they can.
Gee, I'm shocked. Okay, anything else? Okay, remarks to the select board, everyone? I just want to remind the select board that Ken and I sent a letter to all the other town boards reminding them of looking at the master plan.
Yes.
Yep, that's been done.
Boards and committees?
Boards and committees.
Great.
Okay, that's done.
And the planning board did also look at it, and we're going to do it every...
Okay, great, anything else?
We're going to do agenda items too, right?
Yeah, this comes up.
Okay.
Okay, items for future agendas.
I have two. One is, I think we need to reactivate the Dalton Cable Advisory Committee, because there are issues that the town needs to resolve with Spectrum.
Yeah.
I don't, I think Ken has a list of the previous people that were on that, and maybe you could contact some of them, and I could suggest some other people who would be interested if you need some people.
Yeah, terrific. Do we need as an agenda item, or can we just direct town manager?
Well, we could just skip that, that would be great, we'll do it right away.
Okay, we do, Ken, we can get that going.
Committee exists, we can get it working.
All right, well, that was easy, and I have one more item, which isn't so easy. Because it potentially has a huge future liability, I would like to have a discussion of the need to permanently eliminate the option for the select board members to be eligible for town-paid health insurance.
Well, we can do that, we're going to have to, that's got to come up soon anyways.
Yes, and it would be appropriate to do it soon.
It would be appropriate to do that, okay? Because it's on a year-by-year basis.
Well, I want to make it a permanent thing, of course, not anywhere that year by year.
We'll get it on there and talk about it.
Okay.
All right, John, anything?
Just the... Uh, just the, uh, see if we can make some progress on the White House. Again, the House on Gulf Road, I can't say the White House.
Yes.
We'll get that, we'll get that on the agenda.
Spring's coming, we're gonna have a good time to, uh, demolish it. I'm sure John Ruffly could take care of that, I shouldn't volunteer him for anything. He was gonna do it originally, was he, Ken?
Yes, he was.
The highway?
Yes, uh, there was a hole for their items that were in there, in storage, which...
Yeah, if we could, you know, set a date, give an opportunity to remove their stuff of whatever's in there, and, uh...
That shouldn't take long, and that everything down, not much holding it up, to be honest.
I think, about liabilities.
Absolutely.
I would advise that the items in there be very well cleaned before they're moved to any other town building, because of the possibility of moles and other things.
I bet there is. Okay, anything else for future agendas? Mr. Ken, do you have anything for future agendas that you would like to see?
One of the things we should talk on, I'm glad, thank you for asking, because it's been on my mind, we should talk, the revised state law for open meetings would allow people to participate remotely, and that's something we ought to think about, because we do have board members sometime that are out of town, and the state law in summary says that if you have a quorum of the board, people can participate remotely, except the discretion and election of the select board, so we should talk about that.
Does the quorum have to be here, and then the other person?
Yeah.
Yes, the quorum has to be here, and then you could add on, okay, thank you.
I just want to... At what point do we start talking about the marijuana law and how it affects our town and whatnot?
Probably at the next meeting, I just got back some information from...
Okay, should we put that out for the next meeting?
Yes, we should.
Anything else? Okay, this leads us to the announcements. The transfer station are accepted Christmas trees now, their hours of operation are Tuesday and Wednesdays from 2:00 to 6:00 P.M., Friday from 8:00 P.M. to 4:00 P.M. I hate to see those Christmas trees in here. The police department is reminding the citizens of Dalton of the winter parking ban from 1:00 A.M. to 6:00 A.M., which went into effect on November 15th, 2017, and will be in effect to April 15th, 2018. I hold office hours on Thursday from 4:00 to 6:00 in the town select board office at the town hall. Please note that Dalton's official meeting postings, agenda minutes can be viewed at The veterans agent's office hours are on Tuesday from 10:30 A.M. to 1:00 P.M. at the town hall, and from 1:00 P.M. to 3:30 P.M. at the Dalton Senior Center. You can reach the veterans agent at 413-684-6111, extension 19. State Representative Paul Mark holds office hours at the Dalton Town Hall, 462 Main Street, in the Callahan Room on Tuesdays from 9:00 A.M. to 4:00 P.M., with the exception of the third Tuesday of each month. On the third Tuesday, office hours are 9:00 A.M. to 1:00 P.M. at the town hall, and from